Meeting of the Economic Development Committee, meeting Tuesday, May the 20th, 2014. Pleased to be joined by my colleagues, Paul Kukourian, Jose Wezar, and myself. Okay. Members, without any objection, we're going to move items two, three, four on consent. We're going to begin with item one, and we've got a couple of cards. We'll take those cards.
Item number one is a presentation from the Economic and Workforce Development Department relative to the draft City of Los Angeles Workforce Investment Board Year 15 Annual Plan.
Okay, let's take comments. We've got Raul Gonzalez. Raul, why don't you step up and state your piece, followed by Yolanda Lewis.
Good afternoon, members. My name is Raul Gonzalez, and I am a client of Community Centers Incorporated, based on 78th Street in Vermont, it's south of LA. And the reason for me to be here is to please ask you to reconsider funding for our Work Investment Act. We know that since Mr. President Clinton was in office, he sent his funds to our communities to send people back to work, and dislocated workers. Ever since, we've been funneling funding through different channels. When it gets to our community, we have one or two weeks left as a full-time employee. So today, it's going to be my second week, full-time working, full-time for an organization. Before that, I used to work for seven years for the school district. And after that, when I wanted to incorporate into the workforce, they needed me to retrain. Either they asking me for a bachelor's degree, master's degree, or doctorate degree to do the job that I used to do when I started seven years ago. So for me, Work Investment Act and getting LA back to work is very crucial. I have four kids and a wife, and one is blessed, God bless her, she's going to be going to UC Santa Cruz next year. So I need my income. I need a full-time job with a decent-paid job, which will provide for my family and food and the bread that they need to survive. So please reconsider the proposal. Please fund Work Investment Act to 75th and Vermont. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your service to this community.
Good afternoon, council members.
Can you put the microphone up a little closer to you?
Good afternoon, council members. I too am a part of the South LA workforce, the Community Centers Incorporated, located on 76th, 1-8 South Vermont Avenue. I too came from the school district. I was laid off two years ago, and I came into the workforce, you know, requiring, you know, placement within the workforce. They helped me through a program called Getting LA Back to Work. They supplied supportive services to me, as well as you can come into the workforce center, and they'll help you as far as getting your resume updated. You can, they have works, they have, sorry. I really don't want the community center to be closed. The workforce provides so many services to the community, and it would be a shame for the workforce center to discontinue the funds that helped so many people in the community get back to work. There are supportive services that help community members as far as updating their resumes. There are supportive services that help them as far as tokens for transportation. They supply supportive services that help clients, you know, get to work, job interviews. So closing that center would just be a disadvantage to that actual area and the facility. So I really hope you reconsider, you know, taking the funds from that program and placing them in another economic, you know, in another area that can, you know, benefit from the funds the way that we do.
All right, then, thank you. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your service in this program. We know how important the workforce centers are, and I think it's timely that we get a report from the Economic and Workforce Development Committee. We'll ask the director to come forward, other staff, provide us with an overview of the proposed plan for '14, '15, and bring us up to date on some of the good things that the program has done and will do, will continue to do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and to the council members, members of the committee. My name is Jan Perry. I'm the general manager of the Economic and Workforce Development Department, and let me have the individuals who are at the table introduce themselves.
Robert Science, Assistant General Manager.
Michael Dolph, and I'm the Division Chief for the State of California Employment Development Department for Los Angeles Ventura.
Greg Irish, the Executive Director of the City of Los Angeles Workforce Investment Board.
Thank you very much, and we're all very pleased to present the draft Workforce Investment Board Annual Plan for fiscal year '14 through '15. Now, this plan sets forth the vision and the goals, strategies, policies, and budget recommendations for the City of LA workforce development system. It incorporates the mayor's goals for promoting good jobs and providing outstanding customer service to our residents and businesses. Also incorporated in the plan are goals identified by the State of California and the City of Los Angeles Workforce Investment Boards. These goals focus on workforce needs, industry sectors in high demand, and the support of economic expansion and revitalization by meeting the needs of businesses and job seekers. This department, through the workforce development system, manages a network of centers that include 17 workforce centers, 13 youth source centers. These centers are located throughout the city and provide services for job seekers, businesses, and young people, and they are provided in conjunction with a network of partners that include educational institutions such as the Los Angeles Unified School District, the State Employment Development Department, chambers of commerce, and economic development agencies. A critical feature of this year's plan is the redesign of the workforce development system that provides job search services to adults and dislocated workers. I wanted to note, and I have Robert go into the process that we went through, the RFP process, the appeals period is over, and we hope to be able to move forward in this process to meet our July 1st deadline. Service providers for the adult workforce centers were procured through a complex request for proposal process. The process was transparent and strictly adhered to federal, state, and city procurement guidelines. The scoring tool was developed and validated by economists and workforce consultants from Cal State University Northridge, who have experience in evaluating integrated service delivery programs. A team of outside volunteer evaluators with expertise in workforce development and/or economic development rated the demonstrated ability and program design sections of the proposals. Evaluators were called upon to review the 25 proposals submitted for consideration. An appeals hearing was held on March 24th, 2014. The appeals board included a representative from the mayor's office, the chair of the Workforce Investment Board, the chair of the Workforce Investment Board Youth Council, the designee of the chair of the Economic Development Committee, and myself. And I just want you to know that during the RFP process, I did recuse myself because I was on the appeals panel. There were three appellants. The appeals board upheld the department's recommendations for the new workforce system. The process was fair, impartial, and well-executed. The proposers were selected based on the merits of their proposal that called for an integrated service delivery model for our workforce system. So it's important that we move this process forward, as we have a July 1st deadline, to be up and running and to be ready to go. Our department recommendations have been approved by the WIB, and the appeals process is concluded. We hope that this committee and the council approval will move forward so we can finalize the contracts and be ready to offer vital services to the residents of the City of Los Angeles, starting July the 1st. I'd also like to thank our chairperson, Chairperson of the Workforce Investment Board, Charlie Wu, or Charles Wu, he just returned from being out of the country, so he's ably represented here today, by Greg Irish, and our Youth Council Chair, David Crippens, and then Michael Dolph, and is here on behalf of the Workforce Investment Board, and that's it.
Can you talk to us about the new design, what the features were of the new design?
Since I recuse myself from that part of the process, Robert will tell you about it.
All right, thank you. Robert?
So there was two major focuses that we went into, the redesign for the adult system. Number one was to link our workforce to our economic development activities, and that was very specifically about our sector work, and being able to integrate sector-focused training and sector-focused support into each of the 17 centers. The second major focus was on vulnerable populations. We lived through the Great Recession that really hit Los Angeles hard, and it hit Los Angeles harder than most places across the country for one particular reason, is that our population suffers an undereducation and uneducation in terms of degrees. We have about 27% of our adult population right now without a high school degree. So with that low educational status, and in terms of recovery, much of the jobs actually require now at least a post-secondary degree in terms of entry level. So our focus on the vulnerable populations, to get them back into the educational systems, back into the workforce, really depended upon giving them more training and giving them more educational certificates and degrees. So how we are going to do this is leveraging the partnerships, and that's why we thank and ask Michael to come and be a part of this. One of our major partners is Economic Development Department, is actually state-run, as you know, and being able to integrate their resources with our resources, and make sure that each of our centers has the services, both of our local funded dollars, and in our draft plan, we have about $48 million that we're presenting to you for comment today. But in addition to that, the state actually brings their resources. We're in the process of developing MOUs, not just with the state, EDD, but the Department of Rehab. We're also working with LA Unified School District in a very concerted manner, LA Community College District, and the Department of Mental Health.
You mentioned the partnerships and the collaboration, and we do appreciate that, with the educational institutions. I know at least one center is going to be, was selected along with Trade Tech. Were there any other community colleges, for example, included in the selection process?
Yes. We've had a longstanding arrangement at City College with MCS, and that model has proven very, very fruitful. We are in negotiations right now in West Los Angeles College as our third partnership to have it directly on-site. We had a longstanding relationship with Valley College in working on our workforce centers, and actually are doing a long-term unemployed grant right now with Valley College. The one, or two colleges I would say that we have less of a relationship with right now is Pierce College and Mission, but we're making concerted efforts to reach out to them as well.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions, comments?
If I may add for a moment, there are a couple of points I'd like to make on behalf of the state. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Go ahead, Mr. Dolph, why don't you?
Well, I just want to be sure that these didn't get away. One of the things about the integrated design that we're talking about allows us not only to share staff across the table, but also to provide some integrated accountability. The Employment Development Department, for the most part, aren't connecting people with jobs as funded by Wagner Peiser, and those partners that are funded by the Workforce Investment Act report in different streams. And in those streams, from a certain center, those, that accountability never collapses together. All the way to Washington DC, there are separate reporting streams. And the successes that may happen at a certain location aren't collaborative, so you can't point to our Canoga Park facility and say that X amount of people have received jobs or connected with jobs or job training as a result of that facility. They're the EDD numbers, and they're the WIe numbers. So what the Employment Development Department is bringing also to the table is what we call the new Cal Job System, that will allow a lot of the reporting to be collaborative, and the reporting to kind of funnel along through these single reporting streams, so we can point at a certain site and say, this is happening there on both sides of the fence. Because in the end, both of our responsibilities are connecting job seekers with employers and vice versa.
Right. Mr. English?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg Irish with the WIB. What you have before you is a plan. You're being given a sneak preview of the strategies, as Ms. Perry said, of what we intend to employ this year to deal with the unemployment problem in the City of Los Angeles. Currently, unemployment is at 8.5% as of April. That translates into 163,400 people out of work. When you compare that to the county's unemployment rate, removing us, the county has a 7.5% rate of 136,000 people, so we exceed them in terms of the people unemployed. The plan includes $57.5 million of expenditures on workforce development. It's less than the current year, which is 65 million. What the general manager was saying is she dealt with the adult program. There's all kinds of programming in here that's under her aegis, including 13 youth source centers, and then specialty programs. What's going to happen with this document is it goes to the WIB tomorrow. It is then finalized. It comes to you in a final version. Today, according to federal legislation, what we're asking is using this committee as part of our public comment period, because we have a 30-day window to secure public comment, both from you and the public, that actually has an impact on what the final document will look like. At the end of the month, it'll go to the Executive Committee of the WIB. That will close the public comment period. We will revise the plan accordingly in terms of the input that we get. We will then bring it back and recycle it back through this process again.
All right. Thank you.
So, thank you for the report. There were two members of the public who spoke about the services that are being provided to them currently, and I gathered from their comments that they're clients of one of the centers that's not being recommended under the RFP. So if I'm understanding that correctly, can you speak to them and others who are in their position about what the transition plan may be for providing service to them, what other resources may be available, what are the next steps for people who are currently being served there?
And just so you know, we have had, since the appeals period closed, we have met with all of the appellants, and they have been briefed, and I'll have Mr. Science go through the process post-closure of the appeal period with you.
So for all the clients, we'll be transitioned to the nearest or the most convenient for the client location. So the case file will actually be transferred, and we'll set up orientation meetings at the new facility. For the staff, the staff fall under the contract retention ordinance, and they would be, by ordinance, one of the first folks that will be offered positions for folks that will be hiring of the new contractor. So any new positions will be posted to them first, and they have the opportunity to bid on those positions. We anticipate that within the next 30 to 45 days, we will be transitioning each of the centers. We had four centers that are going to be, are not selected as a part of this.
Okay. And so what will the notification process be for the clients of those centers?
Right. We will actually notify everyone individually, where we do have all the addresses, and then we'll start the posting at the centers for any of the walk-ins.
Okay. Questions? Well, we appreciate the work done through the WIB. It's an important tool in the toolbox. It sounds like a very forward-looking plan. We're excited with the new elements in it, and look forward to approving the final plan as it's presented, hopefully within 30 days. Is that the plan?
Yeah.
Back in 30 days?
Back the first week of June.
Okay, first week in June.
That's on your calendar.
Right, because we want the new contract X in when, July 1?
Correct.
Great. We want to make sure that's on track. Okay, well, without any objection, we will accept the draft report and look forward to a final report within 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Okay. Let's, before you all go too far, why don't we just move to item six?
Item six is a WIB and EWDD report and CAO report relative to program year 2014-15 Workforce Center Operators' Request for Proposal Final Recommendations.
Do you want the CAO to go first?
Yes, why don't you?
Good afternoon. Shafiya Meir from the CAO's office. Before you, is the CAO report recommending approval of the Economic and Workforce Development Department's Request for Proposals Results for Workforce Center Operators for the '14-15 program year of the Workforce Investment Board. Out of 26 proposals, EWDD selected 17 for funding based on their scores. In addition, EWDD is seeking to establish a replacement operators list, which consists of the 17 recommended for funding, as well as four additional non-selected proposing organizations, which received a score of 70 or higher. In case one of the 17 selected Workforce Center Operators needs to be replaced, the organizations included on the replacement operators list would be eligible to operate the Workforce Center that was requiring the operator. The source of funding for the Workforce Center Operators is the Workforce Investment Act. EWDD anticipates funding each of the 17 workforce centers for about $1.075 million a year. The contract services would begin July 1st through June 30th, 2015. The proposal evaluation process took into account EWDD's goals of redesigning the workforce development system to emphasize strategic partnerships, new technologies, and increasing service levels for vulnerable populations, among other key innovations. The recommendations before you only seek approval of the 17 workforce center operators and the establishment of the replacement operators list. EWDD anticipates addressing the funding and contract authority, as mentioned, in the upcoming '14-15 WIB Annual Plan, anticipated for council consideration and the committee in June 2014. So if you have any questions, I can take that at this point, or the department can answer your questions.
Which are the backup?
I'm sorry?
Which are the backup?
The backup, in the attachment that's to our CAO report, there's four of them. So all of the ones that say "recommended," those are total 17.
Oh, I see, they're in the, okay.
And then everything else that has a score of 70 or higher, there's four of those in addition, would be the backup as well.
Okay. And they all seem to be funded at the same level, the $1.075 million. Is there any opportunity for centers to get supplemental funds? Is there sort of a pot that's available to be drawn down as needed, as required, or are these budgets kind of locked in?
I would defer to the department, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Talking about the funding?
I'm not sure I understand. Are you saying?
I'm just wondering, the funding level seems to be the same for all 17, and the question was, is there, are there any additional funds that can be drawn upon if a center is in need, or they just operate within this?
The reason that they qualified to the level that they did is they also responded to our request to leverage public and private funds, and so those who scored 70 or above were successful in demonstrating that and satisfying that formula. Will there be other funds in the future? I certainly hope so, and we will continue to look for grants and opportunities to provide support, additional support to these centers in their areas of focus.
All right, members? Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. You caught me, Mr. Chair. I put a bind in my mouth. I'd like you, and I think this, what I like about this report, it corrects a longstanding error, I think, I had in providing workforce centers for Boyle Heights, which obviously the map you guys provided has shown that at a poverty level, it is one of the areas that needs the most help, and finally, we have a center there. I know there was a northeast one that was to serve Boyle Heights, but geographically, for low-income transit-dependent people, it's very difficult for people from Boyle Heights to get out to Lincoln Heights and get these services. So I think that corrects that. Now, one question I do have is, we used to have one in downtown. That one no longer exists, but I think with all the great economic opportunities there, all the new jobs that are being created with the development, major development projects, if we were to work with some of them to better coordinate with our workforce centers, to provide them with those jobs, where would we direct them in downtown? Would we direct them to Boyle Heights, to Pace, their CRCD?
Let me give you two answers to that question. The first one is a little easier. There are a number of programs in the Skid Row area that already focus on workforce development. One of them is Chrysalis, and the other one comes out of the Weingart Center, and we are looking for ways to augment what they do and to be far more strategic than we have in the past to be able to support that population. Boyle Heights is fairly close. CRCD is in the northern part or the southern part of the east side of downtown Los Angeles, but we are going to be seeking grant funding to help the existing programs, and to see if we can strengthen them, help them with their outreach, help them with their targeting, and, you know, bring more resources to them.
Okay. The other thing, too, as well, is in the northeast part, including Boyle Heights, well, we, it's a large area, but also what helps sometimes is to have these mobile units to go out. Do we have mobile units still in these work sources, or is it by, whatever agency's given the award, they may or may not have mobile units?
Right. And we tried in the past to do the mobile unit, and it just didn't work. It was infeasible in terms of being able to pay for a driver and the assurance. So we abandoned that about three years ago, and actually turned over, or turned back the mobile unit. But some of the sites do have mobile units, like Goodwill, which is another major provider near the downtown area, and we would rely on them to actually use that. LEUSD also has for the youth center a grad van that we take to all of our events that are focused on youth, and that has been real effective. And the good news is that LA Unified pays for that.
Okay. Great, thank you. And so if we are to move this forward today, Mr. Chair, I'd like also that we could request a report back along with the approval that we look at some of those numbers on the mobile, I'd like to see some of those numbers, if we were to encourage more of the mobile units, and how much that cost, cost benefit of that, just to get a report on that, just to see what, for us to see that. Thanks.
Okay, good. Any other comments? Okay, we'll accept the report as presented with the recommendations, and look forward to a report back on the mobile units.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move to item five.
Item number five is a motion, Western Price Buscayino Parks, relative to an instruction to the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department and the EWDD to prepare comments relative to the second round of the U.S. Department of the Housing and Urban Development, Promise Zone designations, including the standard resolution for inclusion of such comments in the city's federal legislative program, and for HCID LA and EWDD to submit the comments within 30 days to council for approval prior to submission to HUD.
Okay, I'll, there's quite a bit of interest in this follow-up Promise Zone designation. Can we get a report? Kind of a status report where we are and?
I'm not sure if my colleagues from EWDD are going to join me, but my name is Claudia Monterrosa, and I'm the Director for Public Policy and Research at the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department. I'll give you a really quick overview of what the Promise Zone guidelines are for the second round, and then, of course, if you have any questions in regards to, in terms of the status of the Promise Zone as pertaining to the involvement of the housing department in particular. So the second round of Promise Zone application guidelines, comments are due June 16th.
I'm sorry, June, do, when?
June 16th. So we have a few weeks, a couple of weeks, to really work on these comments that are due to HUD. And the Promise Zone goal initiatives, our core issues that it tries to address are creating jobs, increasing economic activity, improving educational opportunity, reducing violent crime, leveraging private capital, helping local leaders navigate federal programs. In the prior application, improving affordable housing was a core component of the application. It's gone, it's missing from the second round, which is very interesting, since this is an application that is being done in conjunction with HUD and three other U.S. departments. The Promise Zone designation commits the federal government to partner with local leaders who are addressing multiple communities, revitalizing changes in a collaborative way. Now, the applications must provide a very clear description of how the Promise Zone will accelerate will accelerate and strengthen comprehensive community revitalization. A Promise Zone designation is good for 10 years, and the specific benefits will vary from year to year. Now, it's really important to understand that there is no grant funding associated with the Promise Zone. It is a designation, and that's what it is. The qualifying criteria for this is that it has to be one or more contiguous census tracts. It cannot include separate areas for the entire local jurisdiction. The Promise Zone area must have 33% overall poverty rate of extremely low-income households, and the mapping tool provided by HUD must be utilized. Now, in the first round of Promise Zone, the poverty rate required was 20%. So that poverty threshold has been increased by 13%. And the Promise Zone boundaries must have between 10,000 to 200,000 residents. The existing Promise Zone that the city has, has about 160,000 residents in that geography.
What's the new criteria gonna be now, 200,000?
200,000 is the maximum. Minimum 10,000 to 200,000 residents in the contiguous geography. And the jurisdiction's mayor must be committed to the Promise Zone. So there has to be a letter of support and commitment, demonstrated commitment, that the city is 100% behind that application. There is a maximum 100 points that can be achieved for this application, and the minimum threshold is 75 points to be considered. Eligible applicants include local governments, so the City of Los Angeles, or nonprofit organizations or housing authorities. It's really important to note that in this application, the mayor or the city can really only select one. So if there are three different areas that the city is interested in, the city must make a determination as to which one is going to move forward. Another key change from the prior application is that it required the geography to have either a choice neighborhood, a Promise Neighborhood Grant, or a Burn Criminal Justice Innovation Grant. And that was one of the premises to qualify, and you had to be invited. In this second round, that is not the case. You do not have to have any of these designations. But it does expand, and so if the geography does have a sustainable communities grant program, or if it has a TIGER grant, or if it has any of these three grants, it can show that in the map. And that really is what it is. It's expected that HUD is going to be actually selecting between five to up to 15 additional Promise Zones over the course of the next two years. They expect to release the completed guidelines at the end of this year and to have the selections done by sometime in 2015. But there will be a total of 20 Promise Zone designated areas by 2016.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So on the first one, I'm still at a loss. If you were required to have been part of some other programs that were listed, what parts of Los Angeles qualified?
As I understand it, there were, I believe there were two areas, three areas that had a neighborhood choice program, neighborhood?
So only three parts, three areas of Los Angeles qualified?
Of the Los Angeles area. You had to have either a choice neighborhood, a Promise Neighborhood Grant, or a Burn Criminal Justice Center.
And those three areas are, were?
And I believe Bacoima and East Hollywood, where the Youth Policy Institute had a grant. And I believe, and I would have to double-check, that maybe Boyle Heights also had one of these.
Boyle Heights also had one, right. So Boyle Heights qualified. And who decided where they would go? I mean, from our end, did we apply and we said we're selecting these two other areas?
Now, I'm not privy to the actual, what happened. In actuality, the housing department was actually called to assist the mayor's office two weeks before the deadline in November 26th of 2013.
And don't those types of applications normally come through council?
As I understand, usually they do. They have to?
Do you know why this one didn't?
No, I do not, no. No. I mean, by the time we were involved, the geography had already been set. And so what we were called to do was to do specific mapping and data gathering on housing characteristics, housing need, neighborhood improvement, issues within the Promise Zone area. And we did do some narrative drafting to assist the mayor's office and the applicant, the YPI.
I would just hope that this does not occur again. You know, we as a city work collectively, and typically it's up to, you know, we should, as we apply and have the full support, we should also have it of council. And I don't know who I should be directing my comments at, but I think this is not the way to go about applying for these grants.
Yeah, unfortunately, we were called, and we were there, and we made it happen, so...
Yeah, well, it's better to have something over nothing.
Well, we appreciate that, yeah. I think we do have a representative of the mayor's office here. Perhaps she'd like to join us at the table? I think we all want to make sure that we put our best foot forward, we put our other best foot forward this time, and certainly do all we can to maximize opportunities for other underserved portions of the city to be eligible. Could you give us some insight on this process and where your role's gonna be?
For the record, my name is Allison Becker. I'm the incoming, the new director of the Los Angeles Promise Zone Initiative. This is, you know, basically my first week, so I'm happy to take notes and listen closely to the concerns that have been raised. It's really hard to kind of completely pull apart the process that was used for the first application. I'm not an expert on council rules. I know that if we're going to ask, if the city is gonna request grants, then that is something that comes through the city council. In this case, it is a designation, so I'm not sure if the same rules would apply. But my understanding is that the application opportunity was brought to the city by Youth Policy Institute, which had met that key criteria of not only having a Burn Criminal Justice Planning Grant, but also having a Promise Neighborhood Implementation Grant. And that kind of created a unique opportunity for this particular area to be very successful in the technical ranking of the application. It's as much a science, really, when you look at how the criteria is set, and it just seems like there was a lot of alignment from a technical point of view with the application that was fielded. And that's really, you know, in large part why we were successful. On a moving-forward basis, I think Claudia has done a great job at kind of identifying opportunities where we might create a little more flexibility for the city. I think one of our key concerns is gonna continue to be the requirement that you have a contiguous geography, which, you know, is something I think we, as we continue to discuss what our formal comments will be, that it might, we might be better positioned if we were able to have a zone that was, that did not have contiguous boundaries. I guess the only other thing I would mention is that one of the key technical points for these types of applications is the ability to demonstrate that the communities where the designation will be added already have very strong collaborative networks for local nonprofits that have existing capacity to manage federal grants. And I think that winds up being a, you know, an obstacle in some cases.
Yeah, but an obstacle that can be overcome, obviously, and?
Correct.
Obstacles?
All you need is one.
Right. And as this process evolves, I hope you'll work actively and collaboratively with community-based organizations. They've already begun to have the discussion, and I think we want to make sure, again, that areas that were not considered are, have a better chance this next time around.
So if you know of groups that are already getting ready, I would love to talk to them. You would please be sure to direct them.
We can refer those to you. Mr. Sadio?
So basically, the YPI came to us and provided us an opportunity to be a partner where none existed. So the question now is how we build on that foundation to embellish that experience.
That's correct.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair, just so that I'm clear. The deadline that you mentioned, June 16th?
June 16th.
June 16th is the deadline for providing comment on the?
On the draft regulations for the second round.
The regulations that describe the criteria through which a selection is made?
That's correct.
Okay. When, then, would you anticipate that the actual process of application and selection begins after that?
They've suggested fall as a target for the release of the notice of the competition.
Okay. And just as a forward-looking follow-up to Mr. Weezer's question about eligibility areas, under the draft regulations that are before us now that we're commenting upon for round two, what areas of the city would be eligible under those new regulations? Have you mapped that out yet?
We generally know where the high-poverty areas are in the City of Los Angeles, so they would be concentrated in South Los Angeles, portions of Boyle Heights, parts of the mid-city area.
But I mean, taking all of those criteria together, have you done the Venn diagram of figuring out, among the high-poverty areas, these are the areas that would be the most likely to score highly under the new criteria?
We have not done that. We have not done that. In terms of scoring or indexing, where is the highest concentration or that will meet that threshold based on the criteria of the proposed guidelines?
So for us to meaningfully provide our recommendations about comments that we might have on the scoring criteria, it would have been helpful to know today, with the proposed scoring criteria, what parts of Los Angeles would best qualify, so that we could have some give and take with you about, okay, well, in order to make more areas qualify, or in order to make those areas that qualify rank higher, we would recommend some different criteria, or variations on the criteria.
Right. There's a requirement of 33% of extremely low-income households, and so those are located in very specific areas of the city to meet that threshold. But we can certainly go back and do a ranking and submit that along the comments.
Okay. Before we get even close to a deadline for an actual application process under the new guidelines, I gather that the council will have an opportunity to participate in the discussion about where we should target our applications. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
At least that's our plan, yes.
Also, it will be, one of the things that they outline in the proposed guidelines is that we already have a designation for the Promise Zone, so we would have to, as a city, demonstrate how, I mean, an additional Promise Zone designation will be bolstered, or where is that commitment to do that? So I think it's really important to take that into consideration.
So that's a, actually, really good point that I hadn't considered, but the requirement of contiguousness, or contiguity, what's the word? Contiguity or contiguous? Which, the requirement that it be contiguous, that doesn't relate to the existing designation.
That's correct.
So we can have two non-contiguous Promise Zones, provided they were awarded in different rounds?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
You know, the report says, report back in 30 days. I think we need to report back a little quicker. These comments are actually due in another two weeks, or another week, correct?
About two and a half weeks, yeah. Yeah, two and a half weeks.
All right, we got a plan on meeting? Then I'd ask that you circulate those to each of the committee members, those proposed comments. Right. Well, if you can be coordinated, at least provide the comments when this item comes before the council, so we can be in a position to have some discussion on it. I think it would be very helpful.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, members, let's move on to item seven.
Item number seven is a?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. May I have the disposition on that item again?
We accept, accept and file.
Oh, sir, it needs to be a motion.
We're gonna adopt the motion.
Oh, thank you.
Item number seven is a CLA, Joint CLA/CIO report relative to option agreements for Community Redevelopment Agency of Los Angeles Designated Local Authority Future Development Properties.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and distinguished members of the Economic Development Committee. I'm Oscar Ishko with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst, and with me is Josh Romer with the Office of the City Administrative Officer. The item before you pertains to the disposition of real property and real property interests of the CRA LA, Designated Local Authority. Staff is seeking authorization to work with CRA LA and the State Department of Finance to negotiate the city's acquisition of 10 real properties through option agreements and one real property interest through a grant deed that have been categorized as retained for future development in CRA LA's disposition strategy. In accordance with the Redevelopment Dissolution Act, CRA LA has prepared and submitted to the State Department of Finance a disposition strategy that inventories all of its real property and real property interests and places them into one of four categories, which is government use, retained for future development, retained to fulfill an enforceable obligation, and sale of property. A city working group comprised of the Office of the Mayor, CLA, CIO, EWDD, HCID, and a few other departments, reviewed CRA LA's entire inventory to evaluate the categories in which property had been placed, and identified property that is of significant interest to the city for preservation and/or future development. As a result, 31 properties were categorized and approved as government-use assets by both the Department of Finance and the city council. Staff is in the process of finalizing the legal instruments needed to complete the transfer of those properties. The Dissolution Act allows successor entities to retain former agency assets as future development as identified in an existing redevelopment plan, five-year implementation plan, community plan, general plan, specific plan, or property encumbered with obligations related to federal funding. Since the city is not the successor entity, a request was made to CRA LA to include property that met that criteria and would allow the city to control their marketing and future development. As a result, nine real properties and one contingent real property were identified in the original CLA/CIO joint report. The contingent property, which is located in Watts, was previously in the sale of property category, but subsequent to the release of the CLA and CIO joint report, and at the request of the city, CRA LA took actions to formally re-categorize the contingent property as a future development one, and added a real property interest to the list of future development properties. A revised list of all of the future development properties is reflected in a revised Attachment A which has been submitted to the city clerk. Josh Romer will now take you through the details on the option agreements that will serve as the instruments to transfer and administer the real property, as well as discuss the grant deed needed to transfer the real property interest that has been added to the future development category.
Recommended actions would allow the city to negotiate an option agreement for each individual CRA future development property. The property for the option term will remain in CRA LA's possession, but the city will have the exclusive option to purchase within a two- to three-year term. The options will be structured so that the city can market the property to potential developers to yield a development that meets the districts and the city's long-term goals and that is in conformance with the original redevelopment purposes. The city's acquisition from CRA would be presumed to be at fair market value. The intent is for the city, during the two- to three-year term, to enter into a development agreement to have in hand with a developer, so the city can convey to fair market value at the time that we exercise the purchase from CRA. During the option term, the city will have the responsibility for property management and maintenance of these properties. And the current actions authorize the city to negotiate with CRA. Upon the Department of Finance approval of CRA's property management plan, we would come back to committee and council with negotiated final option agreements for authority to? come back to committee and council with negotiated final option agreements for authority to execute. The revised additional, or revised recommendations include an additional real property interest, and this is known as T-FAR, Transferable Floor Area Ratio. This is the city's program of transferable development rights. The real property interest is 2.5 million square feet of T-FAR that CRA owns. Under the dissolution statutes, the T-FAR that's owned by the CRA is an asset that must be sold. The city's dissolution team that Oscar referred to has worked with CRA to develop a plan for the sale of the T-FAR that conforms to the state dissolution requirements, but also conforms to the city's existing T-FAR ordinance, and ensures that the city can continue to administer the T-FAR program in ways that benefit the city without any uncertainty. The proposal currently adopted by CRA LA, governing and oversight boards, and is currently subject to DOF approval regarding the T-FAR, says that the 2.5 million square feet that is CRA's property shall be treated as a future development property. The city will receive the T-FAR from CRA through a grant deed, and the city can administer the T-FAR in the same way that it administers its own T-FAR per the T-FAR ordinance. The public benefit proceeds that are generated from a T-FAR transaction will continue to return to the city. Transfer payment proceeds that come out of a transaction will be returned to CRA to be split amongst the affected taxing entities, 27% of which will return back to the city. In order to split the transfer proceeds as discussed, the city must amend the T-FAR ordinance, and the city has two years to amend the ordinance per the grant deed from CRA, after which the remaining T-FAR may revert to CRA LA for sale. A motion from the Planning and Land Use Management Committee will come before City Council to make the necessary revision to the T-FAR ordinance.
At the conclusion of the State Department of Finance's review of CRA's disposition strategy, the CLA and CAO will provide the council with a final list of future development properties and interests, the final option and grant deed terms, cost estimates for the property maintenance, and request authority to enter into the option agreements and a grant deed. Staff is requesting that the committee adopt the CLA/CAO joint report with the following amendments. A, amend Recommendation 1A to include authorization to negotiate option agreements on 10 CRA retained-for-future development properties. B, substitute Recommendation 1B with the following: Negotiate the receipt of one CRA LA real property interest that includes up to 2.5 million square feet of transferable floor-area rights over the Los Angeles Convention Center through a grant deed with a reverter clause. C, substitute Attachment A in the CLA/CAO report with a revised Attachment A that includes 10 real properties and one real property interest. And D, delete Attachment B, which no longer pertains. That concludes our presentation, and we're open to any questions you may have.
Okay, members, any questions? Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. So to just put it in simple terms, after the dissolution of the CRA, there are some properties that the CRA owned, and now the local, what's it called, the local designated authority is going to the state, to get authorization to sell these properties, or dispose of the properties. You're coming today to say, we want to, as a city, purchase those properties. Correct?
In a sense, we're asking for the ability to control the way that that transaction occurs. Basically, we'd allow the city to control the marketing of the property, and how it's developed. Ultimately, the transaction of the actual sale of the property would be between the selected buyer, developer, and the CRA LA, so that transaction would occur directly between them, but we sort of act as the intermediary negotiator or administrator of that process. The property never legally transfers to the city, and so the CRA would have to be repaid fair market value for that property at some point.
Okay, so we're not obligating ourselves to spend some money to purchase any property, right?
We're not. These are options to acquire. We have two to three years based on each term. When we do acquire from CRA, it will be for fair market value, but the intent, the way we structured these option agreements, is that we wouldn't most likely enter into, we wouldn't purchase the property from CRA unless we had a purchaser, a third-party purchaser that was going to pay us fair market value. So there will be a brief second in time where the city does own the property.
Okay.
But we're not obligated to purchase the properties. We can actually terminate, upon execution of the option agreement, we can terminate in any 60-day period.
Okay. And in terms of the actual use of that property, will it be within the city's purview, or the local designated board to determine and work with the developer as to what actually, how is the property used?
The option agreements are structured so that by the time that we have a development agreement in mind for a specific property, we will go back to the CRA's governing and oversight boards.
We negotiate that with the developer?
We negotiate that, and so the oversight or governing oversight will eventually have to approve the development agreement. It's called a disposition agreement, but it will not necessarily be a land use approval of the development. It's more about whether the development, the proposed transaction, meets the dissolution standards.
Okay. And I think that's good, because in some of these areas, we've already, before this property or the dissolution, and some projects were just stalled and stopped, there was a certain vision or ideas that we have with some of these properties and some local council offices as to what we would like to improve there. So for example, the property on First and Boyle, where we're creating an arts district on the First Street corridor, we're thinking of creating some arts uses, reach on the bottom, and some arts housing upstairs for artists, encourage artists to live there, et cetera. So it would allow the city at least to have some say as to the direction and the use of these properties in the future, correct, and what type of development we would like to see there?
That's correct. That's the goal.
Okay. And so finally, just to ask again to be clear, we're not obligating ourselves on any financial aspect in terms of purchasing any of these properties for the future?
The only financial obligation.
We have an option for the.
That's correct. The option is to acquire. The only financial obligation is that the city will be required to pay for the property maintenance and management during the option term. So we are currently working with the Office of Community Beautification to hire through their existing contracts to make sure that the city can do proactive property maintenance on these properties, and by the time we come back to this board with final agreements, we'll have an annual budget, a cost associated with that property maintenance. I think, based on preliminary estimates, it looks like it might, for all 10 properties together, be somewhere around $100,000 a year to do the property maintenance.
Okay. And what's your view on the posturing of the board, of the local board? Is it that they will function as the previous CRA did, is to encourage economic development activity in an area that otherwise wouldn't occur, so that they may give, they may provide the land at a discounted rate? Or is it more market value, whoever wants to purchase this will work with your developer to do that?
The DOA is a very different animal than what the CRA was, so it's not within their purview or even their ability necessarily to write down land for the purposes of economic development. I mean, their directive from the state is basically to sell property and distribute the assets, the proceeds, to the other affected taxing entities. So the DOA has been very flexible in working with the CRA and giving us a few years where we can basically come up with projects that aren't the result of a fire sale, but the result of proactive, you know, city, you know, working towards a project that really yields public benefits.
Okay. So that also may affect the type of development we are going to be, we are going to see in some areas, because, you know, because of the flexibility that CRA had before, it allowed us to provide some type of development that otherwise wouldn't exist in some of these communities.
That's correct. We have much less flexibility to do any sort of write-down.
Okay. And once, let's say, this board agrees with somebody and they sell the property, is that money going to the state, or does it stay here locally?
Essentially, it'll go to CRA, and it'll be distributed amongst the other taxing entities. There's a number of steps in between that, but that's essentially what happens.
But it is, most of the taxing entities that.
Including us.
Would have received the tax from the tax increment. Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a requirement that these options be exercised within some period of time? What's the timing requirement on them? And does the city have, I guess, with the option, the city would have use of the properties during that interim, or not? I mean, they just shuttered until there's an actual transfer of ownership?
To answer the first one regarding timeline, Department of Finance doesn't necessarily have a timeline by which it needs to approve the long-range property management plan. We anticipate it will be signed or approved hopefully in the next month or so. Upon DOF approval, the city has three months to finish negotiating option agreements and get authority and execute.
Or the property just diverts back to?
CRA will put it on their property for sale, and it'll just get sold at market rate to a market rate purchaser.
Okay, all right. Any way we can get an assessment of the properties, what the market rate is today, and I'm interested in the rehab costs, what costs are contained within the properties. I could be even more specific and say those in the First District.
Yeah, I understand.
We have rough order-of-magnitude appraisals of the properties dating from about a year ago that CRA prepared. We will, during the course of the option period, have to do an actual appraisal. We don't at the time have a specific number that we can share. And regarding properties in the First District, the Westlake Theater, I believe that we have a rehabilitation estimate from a few years back, dating from CRA era. I don't know if we have a more updated version. We can certainly, we can sort of look into that and get that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, without any objection, we'll take the recommended action. Mr. CLA, you want to read that again to us?
Yes. The recommendation is to adopt the CLA/CAO joint report with the following amendments. A, amend Recommendation 1A to include authorization to negotiate option agreements on 10 CRA LA/DLA retained-for-future development properties. B, substitute Recommendation 1B with the following: Negotiate the receipt of one CRA LA/DLA real property interest that includes up to 2.5 million square feet of transferable floor-area rights over the Los Angeles Convention Center through a grant deed with a reverter clause. C, substitute Attachment A in the CLA/CAO report with a revised Attachment A that includes the 10 real properties and one real property interest. And D, delete Attachment B.
Okay, without objection, that'll be approved as amended. Okay, thank you. Our last item, eight, we've got one card. Why don't we take the card before we take the report?
Item number eight is a EWDD report in response to motion Weezer said, relative to the status and accounting of projected revenue to the city of Los Angeles from the former Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. We've got one card. Why don't we take that first from Gigi Zabo? And then we'll have the report. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. As you consider the report, I just wanted to urge you to support dedicating a portion, at least 25% of the Boomerang funds, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Affordable housing creates great jobs, living wage jobs in construction, but job creation isn't really meaningful unless workers have affordable places to live within the city of Los Angeles. Support of housing in particular, which could be created with the Boomerang funds if they go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, significantly decreases the cost to our public systems caused by homelessness. Skid Row Housing Trust just opened the Star Apartments a few blocks from here, which took in 100 of the highest-cost homeless utilizers of our emergency rooms. These are individuals costing the county up to $300,000 a year in expensive emergency room services, and when they moved into our housing, those costs go down to $10,000 to $20,000 per year. So if we dedicate these Boomerang funds back to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, developers like Skid Row Housing Trust and others can replicate those projects and those tremendous cost savings to our taxpayers all over the city. So thank you very much. Hope you'll consider that when you hear this report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments, and we'll ask Mrs. Perry to come back up. And Ms. Scanlon?
So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm sure that you know that on April the 9th, 2013, the council adopted various recommendations and passed an ordinance to establish this department, and its function was to deliver on economic development objectives for the city, and that included job creation, economic development, strategic planning, and investment in low-income and blighted communities. I know that your committee has been focused on how to deliver these objectives, and you requested our department to report back on potential use of Boomerang funds to achieve the city's economic goals. We wanted to hold back a bit until we got a new Assistant General Manager for Economic Development, who was brought on with as much haste as possible, and so I'm able to sit before you today with our new AGM, Jenny Scanlon, in place.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And we are in the final throes of the budget process to determine what positions, if any, we will have in the next fiscal year, but we are positioned and ready to lead the city's economic development efforts. Now, Ms. Scanlon is going to go into greater detail to respond to the facts that I think we're all pretty conversant in, that progress on our economic development objectives can't be achieved without a reliable source of local funding to help the city leverage and be competitive in seeking grants and making strategic investments in business infrastructure, and to initiate job-producing programs. I don't have to convince anybody here about the unemployment rate and poverty rate, and how we compare to cities across the nation, and I think we are all fairly familiar with our continuing challenges in generating net new sales tax revenue, the loss of sales tax revenue to surrounding cities, and what we lose and how that could have been contributed back to the city. Now, we have continued to face very difficult budgetary decisions, and we can do some obvious things, but for our department, I think the most tangible and palatable path is to invest in expanding the city's revenue base by dedicating Boomerang funds to develop economic development initiatives. It's a proven method that is used across our country, not only meets social objectives by creating jobs, providing economic opportunity for underserved communities, but also generates net new revenue for the city over time. So Ms. Scanlon will go over some detailed recommendations with you on an investment proposal, and then we're happy to answer any questions your committee might have.
Thank you.
So as I understand it, and as Ms. Perry alluded to, I know that this has been a report that your committee has been waiting for since, I think, approximately November of last year, and it was, I'm glad that I had the opportunity to have some input in it before it got before you, and obviously, I'm sure there are questions and comments related, but let me go over sort of what we are proposing. So for those who are not exactly familiar with the term Boomerang funds and why we're using that term, we've alluded to in the report that the city used to receive over $200 million a year in funds specifically for economic development and housing in its redevelopment project areas, and that was sort of a continuing source of funds the city was able to use through the redevelopment agency to invest in projects and programs that built affordable housing units, that built shopping centers, that created jobs. As of 2012, as you know, with the dissolution of that redevelopment agency, and it was talked about in the prior item you just heard, the city no longer had access to that tax increment source. And what we have instead is a distributed portion of the tax increment that comes back to the affected taxing entities after the successor agency has spent what they need to complete their enforceable obligations. So that equates right now, from what we understand in looking at the numbers that have come through the city and the CAO's office, is approximately $40 million a year. Now, that's about 15% of what the city used to receive for economic development and housing. As of 2012, the city made some determinations on how to spend those funds, and at that time, and through those budget process, those funds were kept as general fund dollars and used to deal with the city's budget deficit. What we are proposing here in our recommendation, which you see on page two, is really to consider these funds as a set aside, and put together a permanent set-aside source to help to fund some of the mandated policies and requirements for the Economic Development Department that came out of your actions back in April of 2013, and also to set aside 20% to help fund the affordable housing. We used an 80-20 percentage split between economic development and housing because the former redevelopment agency, and under state law, was splitting the funds accordingly. So it was an 80-20 split. So it was an 80/20 split by, by state requirement. So we felt that that was sort of an appropriate approach at this time, clearly something for the council to further consider. But as our recommendation lays out, we propose that instead of having to come every budget year to ask for funds for specific economic development programs or projects, that the city give us a source that is a consistent source, which then gives us the ability to go out and use that source, leverage that source over time, do multi-year funding of projects, which is pretty common in economic development activities, and, and really be able to generate new income and new projects and new jobs for the city. So what we're proposing is either that in this fiscal year, we look at initiating that 80/20 split, split based on the 100% of funding coming back through the boomerang funds. And if that is infeasible because we are too far along in the budget process, or we are not in a position as a city to make that level of commitment, we looked at the opportunity to phase in that ultimate commitment of 100% of the boomerang funds. So the proposal in the second option is to establish a three-year phased-in set aside by way of ordinance to achieve the maximum dedication. We propose a split starting in the first year at 10% of the boomerang funds going to HCID for housing and 40% to EWDD for economic development. In the following year, increasing that to 15% to HCID, 60% to EWDD, and then ultimately getting to that 20% and 80% split. This would obviously take council action and ordinance in order to achieve, but we think that it is very achievable. As Ms. Perry also mentioned in the question of why do this, you know, in addition to, we have some sort of dense statistics in the report about our status as a city as it compares to other cities locally as well as nationally, we are not competing well. We are not, we are losing jobs, we're losing businesses, we do not have the same quality of life. We have a cost of living standard that is well beyond the national standard. So this is something that we have to, we believe the city needs to address. We believe that EWDD has the capacity and the charge to help you address it. Part of the, I think, report back asked about how we might spend those funds and what kinds of programs we could put the money into. So what we looked at is a budget based on the, the various different splits. So if you had provided us with 40% of the funds, if you provided us with 60% of the funds, or if you provide us with 80% of the funds, how that money could get dedicated to various different program types. We think that the majority of funds really need to be spent on areas that we call market investment and capital projects. Market investment is that very typical investment in businesses and in projects. So we are talking about in that category, doing different types of loan products or grant products and technical assistance to both small businesses, emerging businesses, entrepreneurs, and large businesses to help them expand, stay in Los Angeles, or start their business up in Los Angeles. We also would be looking to help provide these businesses with technical support so that they could find other sources of funds to help their businesses grow and do various seminars and introductions to things like exporting their goods and services outside of the country. I know a lot of our businesses, that's a very difficult and complicated process. So offering those types of technical support would be part of that program. In capital projects, what we're looking at is infrastructure investment, and this is sort of a tried and true practice in economic development, and it really hits sort of a broader world of investment. So in this case, we'd be looking at different types of capital projects focused around tourism centers and, and areas where we have a lot of business growth. We'd also be looking at investments in communications, high-speed internet and technology. We'd be looking at investments on, on our roads and our infrastructure around goods movement, which is very important for the city of Los Angeles as one of the largest ports in the nation. And how do we get those goods and, and movement either locally as well as regionally? We also would be looking at a more neighborhood-focused program of infrastructure investment where we're really dedicating sources to neighborhoods that need that investment to grow their own economies, to look at their small commercial areas and grow those business hubs into, to larger, more successful business areas. So that's really through the, the concept of the Great Streets Program. We have three other categories that we think are important, one of those being innovations. This is something that I know the council has talked about and is very important. We, as an economy, have to look for the next big thing or the next, the next sort of sector that's going to emerge. We have to invest in more sort of creative, technically advanced businesses and business models. So the innovations program or concept is looking at ways that we can help those business models grow through either incubation and setting up incubation centers, as well as doing some creative small business loans through crowdsourcing and other types of venues similar to that. Lastly, the other two program concepts, one really provides the basis of understanding for how we invest, and that's economic strategy. So in economic strategy, that's where we're developing our metrics for our programs. We're looking at what are the important demographic statistics that we're going to use as the basis for investment, researching and, and tracking various job sectors, and then looking at how that influences, again, the placement of funds. We also think that it's important under economic strategy for us to support the city in marketing itself. You do have LA Inc. and other, other bureaus and, and bids that are doing their best job to market the city and market their areas. So this would be working in concert with those efforts to make sure that we're doing a good job of marketing the city, not only just to tourists and for local attractions, but also to business. So our focus is really about marketing to business and marketing our jobs. And then lastly, asset management, and I don't leave it for, for last because it's least important, this is actually something that's very important, relates again to the item that you heard before. But we have the ability through real estate to influence how our city builds itself, what types of development we want to see in these emerging economies and emerging neighborhoods. So we can look at the, the properties that are coming back from the former redevelopment agency as well as the city's own properties. I know this effort has already been initiated through the CAO's office. So it would be working in concert, obviously, with the work that's starting now and really assisting, influencing, and moving that work forward so that the city can find ways to better utilize its existing properties, market properties that we receive, get them developed, and see them become a real intrinsic part of our new economy. So that gives you sort of an overview of the report, and Ms. Perry and I are here to answer questions.
Well, we sort of didn't realize the, the importance and the need to leverage limited resources in increasingly shrinking pot. Talk a little about the implications if we are not able to dedicate funds for economic development, housing, if we go another year without allocating, you know, a, funds that can be leveraged further, what's, what's the negative impact going to be?
Well, it certainly will slow our progress. You know, we do have one, section 108 money, we do work with new market tax credits now. We have CDBG funds, and of course, that pot is shrinking on a yearly basis. So while we do have some basic tools to work with, we don't have a lot. What we do have that is attractive, because we've already been getting interest and inquiry since I started last year, and it's only going to ramp up as an interest in the land, that is coming back from the CRA and the bond proceeds and the percentage that we might get to be able to leverage with not only domestic investors and developers, but foreign investors and developers. Of course, given the department that we are, we would be tying that very closely through our work source centers to job creation and job generation. We intend to revise our underwriting criteria so the developers coming to the city wanting to do business will understand what the rules, rules of engagement are, so they have some certainty or certitude, so that they can have some expectation, given that time is money, as to how long it would take to go through an approval process, you know, whether we have boomerang funds or not, we're going to do that. But certainly, boomerang funds would, percentage thereof would make things much more, the potential is much greater, much sooner. And, and, you know, real estate market goes through ebbs and flows. I don't know when we'll have the next ebb, hopefully not soon. We're coming out of one right now, but it's, we're certainly not where we were 12, 15 years ago.
I know your office has been approached, as have many of us, about potential funds, investment funds, targeting underserved areas, targeting specific areas. What role do you think they would play? And would those kinds of funds, however they are constructed, be eligible for, for allocations from these program implementation strategies that, implementation?
Are you talking about social impact bonds?
Well, impact bonds or, or, or the like.
You know, I think it, a lot depends on what the tool, what tools are being brought to the table and how they interface with the tools that we currently have now and the potential for what we might have in terms of boomerang funds, if, if any. And it'll probably be a sliding scale. And I think a lot of it's going to depend on land costs and ability to acquire land, how quickly that can happen. You know, we, we provide a very nimble streamlined organization to be able to create a delivery system to move projects through and to do a very upfront assessment.
But do you see, do you see any, any value in contributing to a fund that would then make those kinds of decisions as opposed to?
Are you talking about LADF?
Well, yes, LADF, for example.
What I, what I see, I see a value in us having a split with HCID. It's a very similar analogy to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So we have a dedicated stream of funding so that we can have a process so that, you know, projects either compete like an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and get ranked, or however you want to do that. Because it provides more certainty to people that they know when they enter into a process with us, they're going to come out through the other side. So I do see the value in that.
Members. Ms. Deo?
I have a, in the Housing Committee, I have a motion that wants to move more money into housing. And so what I want to do is offer a friendly amendment, and I move that we merge this motion with that motion, or that motion with this motion, which also speaks to earmarking the, the revenue and get a report back from the CAO and the CDA to report back on the proposals presented to the Economic Development and Housing Department. What I'd like to do is figure out, we're, we're attaching ourselves back to old formulas. And I think this is a new council, it's a new situation, it's a new circumstance. I don't know the value of those formulas, I don't question them, but I want to know if we have an ability to create a, a new formula that works for us today going forward. We know what the resources are, but if we can figure out a way that deals with us maybe having more discretion rather than being locked into a formula and then ascertaining what projects are, are, you know, good to go, which is we should move on so we can maximize the utilization of these limited resources.
So your, your motion then is to combine the reports?
Mm-hmm.
And have a, have them report back to both committees?
Yep.
In terms of the allocation of resources?
In, in Sacramento, you may remember, we would do a conference committee so that we can bring same subject matter together and work it out.
Ms. Wizar?
Yes, thank you. I have a number of questions. I think that's a good idea that we should combine these. I know, Sidya, your motion is in housing. This motion came here, so we'd have to figure out how do we combine them and where do we hear the next update, if it's here or in housing or both. So?
Both.
Both. So that's, yeah, as long as we bring back, bring them back and we figure out where we bring them back, that's fine. But I do have a number of questions right now, which is, in previous reports and in briefings in my office, we've had an indication that we've taken in more than 121 million thus far. Today's report says 92 million. So is, is there a reason for the discrepancy? And is it 92 million? That's the most current number?
Yeah, it's 92 million based on the funds that have been received by the city to date. The prior report that I think you're referring to is one that, that came from EWDD to this committee. And what it was looking at was not only the funds that you've received to date, but funds that were anticipated to be received in June of this year, as well as money that was coming out of what they called the DDR, that went directly to the Housing Department for low mod income housing funds, as well as other funds, which did not have a date, a date received. So it's not clear that the city had received the, the other funding out of the DDR. So the 92 only accounts for what we know you had in hand as of the date of this, the report that I submitted.
Okay. Now, in terms of geography, the funds in question used to be targeted for CRA project areas. And now when we use these funds again, are we using them citywide again? Or what is the criteria for which they will be used? Is a geographic component part of that? Or how will we use these funds in the future? I know you outlined right now earlier, kind of generally for different types of uses. But my question is, in the past, we've kind of focused on areas. Are we now just going to put this out as a general economic development funds available for use for citywide? Is that the approach?
I think it, the approach is going to depend on the amount of money that we actually are able to, to receive. So when we determine what percentage we're going to get and how much money we're talking about, then we'll know our limitations and we'll understand whether these are, we have enough funds so that we can really drill down and look at neighborhoods throughout the city, or whether we have a very limited source of funds, in which case we're only looking at, you know, one or two or three really catalytic projects or neighborhoods. So we're going to have to really constrain ourselves and focus, you know, citywide, but on, you know, just a few projects or few, few areas to really kind of get that economic engine going. The, so, so I think that it's, that's a continuing discussion that we want to have with your committee, with council. And it really is going to go in concert with how we decide how much funding is going to go in to this effort. And, and then we would come up with a criteria for how to spend it.
Well, I think that's a very important question we have to answer for ourselves. Are we going to dedicate these funds to areas that would otherwise not see economic development? And that was the purpose of the redevelopment law in the first place, was to encourage economic development activity in areas that otherwise wouldn't see this type of investment. And so we have to ask ourselves, is that our goal with these funds would continue to be based on that philosophy, whatever criteria we used, right? I mean, we created project areas based upon some criteria, that it's low income, business activity, whatever those, that criteria is. And we have to, before we move forward, tell ourselves, are we going to continue to focus on that? Doesn't have to be the same project areas. Or are we just generally using, using these funds for economic development activity anywhere in the city and we don't care where it happens? That's a very pivotal question, I think, that we have to ask ourselves as we move forward, because I think that's really going to help us think about how we're going to spend this money. That on top of us no longer having our state enterprise zones that were taken away from us, you know, I get often asked, you know, what can we do? What is available to me if I do want to invest in Bull Heights? And it's very difficult now to point to even city programs that we had, because DWP is confused as to whether they should continue with theirs or not, given that the state enterprise zones and their economic incentive programs are now gone. So it's very, I think we have very little as a city to point to, say, hey, if you invest in these low income areas, it's hard to. in these low-income areas, it's hard to attract investment areas. You know, these are the incentives and the encouragement you will get from there. We don't have any of that right now. So even in light, particularly in light of that, we'd really have to think about how we're going to move forward to spend these funds. Also, the options, you described that one of them recognizes the fact that we've been providing, filling the gap of our budget deficit with some of these funds, and now we're going to pull back from that, and almost like the grocery receipts tax, we can't do it all at once, if we want to get away from it, we have to kind of do it in phases so that the general fund doesn't really feel a big pinch. The three-tiered system that you described, what might be lost, I mean, I think that is the best approach overall. Any downside you see to that?
I think, as Ms. Perry said, I mean, really, what you're losing out on is the ability to invest. You know, additional dollars means additional projects, additional businesses assisted, additional jobs grown. So, you know, we will find a way to leverage and spend every dollar that's received, we will make sure that it gets spent in places where public dollars are needed, and not to supplant private funds. So we are only looking at opportunities here where it is going to take the public dollar to move something forward and to really make that catalytic project happen, and that's going to be our methodology. But yes, I think that we are, we are really at a very slowing, slow growth pace, and that will continue to plod along until we choose to make significant investment. And I think one of the points of the report, and, you know, we won't look a gift horse in the mouth, any funds we get, again, will be wonderful, you know, really well spent, but even, even at 100% of the boomerang funds, we're only talking about reaching a 15% threshold for what the city used to receive and spend on economic development and housing. So, you know, it's, it's really an inchworm approach.
Okay.
20%. No, do you have a comment from the City Attorney's Office?
The CAO's office, and in relation to what both Ms. Perry and Ms. Scanlon are saying is, there's opportunities for economic development, but in making that decision, there are going to be choices that this committee and the council will have to be making in terms of the things that are currently being funded with those dollars that we have to date chosen to put into the general fund. Those are also costs to the city in terms of services that we are providing today that we may not be able to provide in the future. So you are facing a very, I think, difficult decision, but there are, you know, the long-term benefits that come with the economic development, and so it's trading the short-term pain for maybe some long-term benefit, and evaluating that will be very difficult for everybody.
And the other thing we have to think about is that, given that the budget is closing the decisions, and we're adopting our budget tomorrow, we're really looking at another year, maybe even through the mid-year adjustment period, to start making some of those adjustments. So we really are not dedicating any significant portions of dollars to economic development activity that we otherwise could use now.
And as you pointed out, the budget proposal for you tomorrow is also looking at implementing business tax reform in '15, '16 as well, which would be another reduction to general fund revenue, depending on what, what business tax reform the council elects to implement. And what we're talking about in terms of the '15, '16 budget with these boomerang funds is we're looking at approximately a $48 million general fund impact, and so that would, in '15, '16, be approximately the same amount, maybe a little bit higher, because the CRA continues to wind down, and those are incrementally getting larger.
So finally, Mr. Chair, with your permission, whenever we get this back in either committee or both committees, you know, we need to resolve a little bit better, I didn't quite understand that, the discrepancy between various amounts of being reported and discussed. Provide details on how the evaluation criteria will be used, and how projects would be assisted. We need some criteria to know where that will, how that would be done, refinement and how the funds would be used to specifically support areas of the city that lost their CRA funds, or is it citywide, and make that critical decision, I think we have to make, your recommendations. And if we could get some of that information in the report back whenever this comes back to us.
Okay. I think we're going to continue this item. First of all, I appreciate, appreciate the work that you've done, that the EWDD has done, laying a foundation. We know it's going to be a slow building process, but time is of the essence. I mean, we don't, as you've mentioned eloquently before, we don't have time to waste. But we will instruct the CLA and the CAO to report back in 30 days on both the EWDD report and the HCID report regarding the boomerang funds, which will be heard in a joint meeting of the Economic Development Committee and the Housing Committee, and let's, hopefully we can plan that within 30 days.
Great. Thank you.
Can, in those instructions, can I just ask that, as you do so well, give us a little bit of history about the formulas and why we chose them, but also think about some more flexible way that would give us more.
You're speaking to the 80-20 formulas that are proposed.
Yes. Give us some, some formulas or ideas around what would give us the greatest discretion, given the, you know, ever-changing economic climate.
Thank you. Thank you all. Is that it? About the other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.